Well, welcome, everybody, to the February 12, 2024, Twalton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call the meeting into order, and we'll start off tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Hillier.
Hi, if you please rise and place your right hand over your heart, face the flag that is now over here, and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll say, "Plead of All."
Okay, that brings us to announcements, and then we have one announcement tonight, the Employee of the Year led by Charlene Lombos.
We even have a slideshow.
Oh.
I know.
At-home movies of you when you were younger.
Well, Mayor Buevenek and council members, it is my pleasure to introduce you to Twalton's 2023 Employee of the Year, Charlie Rollins. But before I tell you about Charlie, let me tell you a little bit about the program. The official program goes back to at least 1988. Its purpose, as you can see up there, is to recognize the work and actions which bring credit to the city and improve our ability to deliver excellent customer service to the Twalton community. The program is very grassroots. It -- we solicit nominations from fellow coworkers, and then a committee reviews those nominations and makes a recommendation. This year, we received -- oh, we have a beautiful city plaque where Charlie's picture will be placed, and he receives $200, not to be spent all in one place. And then a paid day off, not an unpaid day off. So this year, we received 27 nominations, which is up from 17 last year, for 23 individuals. So some individuals received more than one nomination from eight different departments, up from six last year, and 15 different work groups. Of course, only one person can be Employee of the Year, and Charlie is very deserving, but it is very -- is really special for the 22 other folks to have been nominated and to receive that recognition for their work. So as I said, the 2023 Employee of the Year is Charlie Rollins. Charlie is our Fleet Technician Two and has been part of our team since 2008. The proclamation that you're going to read details a lot about Charlie, but suffice it to say that Charlie's work here at the city is the epitome of what the Employee of the Year is, and we are so blessed to have Charlie and his expertise on our team. So congratulations, Charlie, and the proclamation says a lot, so.
A proclamation declaring Charlie Rollins as Twalton's 2023 Employee of the Year. Whereas the Employee of the Year program is designed to recognize the work and actions which bring credit to the city and improve our ability to deliver excellent service to Twalton's customers, and whereas Charlie Rollins hired on April 14, 2008, as Fleet Technician One and was reclassified as a Fleet Technician Two in July 2017 to position he currently holds. And whereas, when the Maintenance Services Manager retired in December 2022, Charlie stepped up to the interim, serving in that highly responsible position for 10 months, which is a long time to do two jobs. Charlie stuck through it with perseverance, motivation, and most importantly, a great attitude. He never once complained and showed up to give it all every day. And whereas Charlie is highly skilled mechanic with over 30 years of experience, but he continues to learn as his field evolves. He seeks out training opportunities and is involved in a network of fleet management peers. He has a "do it correctly and to the best my ability" mentality at all times. This dependability is valuable, particularly in a role like Charlie's, where haste or indifference about his work could lead to potentially dire outcomes. And whereas, no call is too small for Charlie. He will help a person with any task they need at hand, whether it's filling a flat tire, helping someone get gas, or vacuuming stale french fries out of a rig. No task is beneath him. He is behind-the-scenes making Twalton work on a daily basis. He answers his phone any day, any night, 24/7, 365. He's always around and available, even if it's not in his job description. Snowstorm or inclement weather, Charlie's there. Broken-down police rig on a weekend, call Charlie. Alarm going off at the library at 3:00 a.m., Charlie can handle it. Charlie always goes above and beyond without question. And whereas Charlie treats everyone he encounters with respect and kindness, he's an expert at internal customer service and strives to treat others how he would like to be treated. Any person that drives a city vehicle would agree with this. Through everything, Charlie maintains a good attitude, optimistic outlook, and a care for others. And whereas, Charlie consistently demonstrates Twalton's core values of teamwork, respect, having a one-city mindset, empowerment, problem-solving, customer service, and being non-bureaucratic in a multitude of ways every day. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of Twalton, Oregon, that Charlie Rollins is named the 2023 City of Twalton Employee of the Year, introduced and adopted this 12th day of February 2024. Congratulations, Charlie. Thank you. Can Valerie stand up, too? You're gonna go through -- thank you. Now it's your turn. Here's --
And I don't have anything.
All right, well, thank you for everything you've done. 2008. 24/7, wow. You almost sound like an IT guy more. The 24/7. Yeah, all right. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding items that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here in the building or in Zoom who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Anyone, Teresa? Anyone in the council chambers? Nope, all right. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items are considered routine and adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of two items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session irregular meeting minutes of January 8 and January 22, 2024. And item number two, consideration of resolution number 5752-24, awarding a contract for cured-in-place plastic CIPP pipe relining services to Institute of What Is Deform Technologies LLC. Anybody like an item removing consent tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion, second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Brings us to special reports. Special report number one, the Twalton Park Advisory Committee Annual Report. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us. It's hard to believe a year has gone by again. My name is Emma Gray. I'm the current Chair of T-Park, as we affectionately refer to it, and I'm joined tonight by my vice chair, Beth Dittman. We have a slide deck of an annual report which we'd like to go through, and we're going to take turns, so you'll get to hear from both of us. So this is us. You can see here on this graphic that there were 23 meetings that we attended this year. We attended 11 activities, and we had 357 hours volunteered. We are a group of enthusiastic advocates for the Parks and Recreation System with a focus on the stewardship and enhancement of our community. And I like this picture because, although Beth's not in it, which is sad, it is a photo that was taken at one of our in-person meetings, which you'll see mentioned later in the annual report, which is fun, because we haven't had those in a while. Our current member list is there. You can see both myself and Beth there, along with Carl Hostika, Michael Klein, John Makepeace, Anthony Warren, and Ryan, our student member.
A bit of an overview about what we do. There are, of course, regularly meetings once a month where we learn about the Parks and Recreation activities, where we evaluate and provide recommendations to our city staff who oversee the meetings and who are coming to us from Parks and Recreation themselves regarding policies, programs, and procedures. We also provide feedback and guidance regarding how we prioritize projects, especially as it relates to the bond and the utility fee. We find that a pretty important part of our work. We represent Parks and Rec system to city council, as we are here tonight, and then attend events like advocating for participation or engagement in the Parks and Rec system, like Viva Twalton, as an example, and provide community outreach. We are also the B-City Facilitation Committee and the Tree City USA Board.
So we had a lot of accomplishments this year, so we've decided to break them up into some headings, and we're gonna, like I said earlier, take turns talking about them. I know you all remember that when we did this report last year, it was very exciting to report that a bond had passed, and so it will probably come as no surprise to you that a big, big chunk of our work this year involved talking about, learning about, thinking about, providing feedback about actual bond projects, which is thrilling. So we pursued implementation of those projects, which included the play and park equipment, specifically assisting with equipment and surface selections for IBAC, Follady, and Jergens Playgrounds, which you can all now go and see that work, which is really exciting. We talked a lot about athletic field improvements, which are ongoing, but in 2023, you saw the high school and Twalton Community Park Field LED light replacement, which is a really big project we'd like to highlight. In the Natural Areas Arena, we supported park staff acquisition of 20 acres within four separate properties, which over the next several more years are going to become amazing parks resources for our community. And the Veterans Plaza construction documents were completed with work scheduled to begin in this year, 2024, which is really exciting. And beyond those specific large-scale projects, we advocated for clear communication to the public about parks, bond-funded projects, because we feel it's essential that our community know where their tax dollars are being spent and how exciting these things are going to be for our community. The next category is -- oops, skip, skip, skip -- diversity, equity, inclusion, which Beth is going to talk about.
You might recall from a year ago, actually just a little less, we came to you earlier this year, that we actually broke up our goals last year into specific categories, so we're just supporting back on these accomplishments based on those categories of goals. One of those was improved or strengthened diversity, equity, and inclusion within our committee. So we did that by trying to reach out to different groups within our city to make sure that they are represented and advocated for membership within the community. That included Twalatinos. We reached out to the Stone Ridge Visioning Work Group and helped make sure that they were included in the process of renaming the Stone Ridge Park to Las Casitas, which you are well aware. We worked with council to identify ways, or just suggest ways, that we might seat members who are interested as interest arises, and then also connected with the Equity Committee Planning Group so that we can make sure we supported their recommendations to this body. And then we also held three in-person meetings, which we find as part of our diversity efforts, because not everyone has equal access to Wi-Fi and other integrated technologies.
The next category is sustainability and climate action. So under that category, some of the things that we learned about from staff and advocated and talked about in our meetings was continuing to promote pollinator information and resources, providing community resources for both trees and bees, recommending shade structures at playground renovations, suggesting sustainable materials in the parks projects that we were asked to comment and review, and supporting energy-efficient park improvements. And all of that act will continue in 2024, I hope.
Another category of our accomplishments is that we continued to host our joint meeting with the Arts Advisory Committee and invited other advisory committees to join our meetings and share space, where we explored where our Parks and Rec goals overlap with other committee goals. And then we also had a representative, John, from our group, represented T-Park on the Veterans Plaza Art Committee, which was an important collaboration moment. We worked regularly in communication with the IDEA Committee, as we see much of our work overlapping with them, as all their work overlaps with all of the work in our city. We also supported completion of the section of the Twalton River Greenway Trail at the new apartment complex, so that is now, if you haven't been there, it's a great path. It connects all the way.
Would recommend.
And then you can see the long list of utility fee projects that we supported the completion of, and we look at that as a collaboration, because all of those are projects that are not done by themselves. So the field light replacement, the restroom renovations at two of our parks, Little Woodrose Access and Safety Improvements, the Highway 99 Boat Ramp Access renovation design, and not quite into construction yet, called TCP, the barbecue replacement, it's beautiful and it's fun to see being used, Kia Cut's Bridge Repair, and then Victoria Woods Stair Replacement is all part of those accomplishments and collaborations.
So next are our 2024 goals, which Beth is going to go through, and you'll see, like the accomplishments, we've tried to cluster them into some higher categories.
And that print is too small, so I'll now be looking at my paper. Welcome to midlife. And we'll be explaining, the area of sustainability, we'll be explaining where the work that T-Park and Parks and Rec does in terms of operations, programs, and projects, how it intersects with the council-approved climate action plan. We'll also be evaluating our existing tree code for climate resiliency updates and recommendations, continue to promote pollinator information and resources, and continue to be a community resource for trees and bees.
Oh, sure. So the Parks Bond and Utility Fee projects are, as I mentioned, a huge bulk of our work. Those will continue in 2024. We will assist staff with prioritizing utility fee projects. We will actively pursue implementation of Parks Bond projects. We will continue to support progress on new river access, advocate for continued progress for an integrated trail system, continue to complete bond playground projects, and support beginning utility fee facilities assessments.
Our final category in the goals that we have for this coming year is the diversity, equity, inclusion, not because of its ranking, evaluating our current park naming policies for possible updates and recommendations that came to light, especially during the Las Casitas renaming, but that's a place that we need to find better policy. And then to work with, hopefully work with Yak, the Youth Advisory Committee, to think about how we can recruit student members, potentially even collaborate student memberships from that committee into ours.
And with that, we welcome any questions or comments from council, and thank you so much for allowing us this time. There are tons of charm. There we go.
Questions? Council Sacco.
Thank you for coming today and all the work that you do, both as leadership of T-Park, but also the whole committee. You know, as you were talking about, you know, being a Tree City and Bee City representatives of our community, I was kind of thinking about how, you know, that can correspond with our climate action plan, and also how parks could maybe have an influence on things like animal agriculture and food options at our park events, and how those work together. And it's something that I haven't really thought about before today, so I apologize for sort of bringing it up on the spot, but, you know, how it sort of weaves in with T-Park and your roles, and how we can achieve those climate action goals through things that we're doing at our parks, so maybe just something to think about.
Absolutely.
But thank you again.
Council President Pratt, and then Council Reyes.
Well, thank you for all the great work you do, and I especially am glad that you're advocating for transparency to the public about what is happening with the Parks Bond, because it's really great for people to see what's getting completed. The Veterans Plaza is going to be great. I have a personal question, because I'm in the CIO with Little Woodrose, and when do you expect that will get done? Because I get asked about that quite a bit.
Yeah, so I don't know if you all noticed that that accomplishment was designed, not built.
Designed, I saw that, yes.
So it is in the future.
Okay.
Rich, do you have an exact date?
Well, I didn't think it was --
Not to throw you under the bus.
I didn't think it was on the top of the priority list, that's why I'm asking, because I know there's a lot of big projects.
It's not imminent, because we have to finish the design before we do the other stuff.
Yeah, we're in construction design right now, and construction will follow. So we're putting construction in the upcoming budget, but construction design is in this budget and is ongoing right now.
That's great. That's a very popular dog-walking little park there. And then I was wondering, you had utilities, utility fee facilities assessment. What did that mean, just that you're going to go through, like, and prioritize?
So that, and I'm going to definitely ask Rich and Ross to chime in if I misrepresent this, but as most of you are probably very aware, the City of Twalton currently owns a huge number, a large number, significant number, of disparate types of buildings, homes, outbuildings, structures, things that are older, things that are not as old, and it's unclear, system-wide, what the usability, or the usefulness, or the utility of all of those facilities are. So one of the important things that the staff wants to do is do a complete audit of those, so that we have a better understanding of how we can use those facilities moving forward for our ultimate goals in the overall master plan, because we don't have that information right now, and we're spending a lot of money maintaining things, and maybe we have resources that we're not fully utilizing, so we'd like to have a better understanding of the scope of all of that. What did I leave out?
Emma left nothing out. And I think if I could just take a moment to just highlight that, that the community of Twalton is extremely fortunate to have a committee, T-Park Committee, that is led by Beth and Emma, who are doing an amazing job and dedicate immense amount of time and energy and focus to the conversation on a monthly basis, and the community greatly benefits from their dedication, and as you can see, their level of understanding and competency and awareness and passion for parks is, the community really benefits. So I think it just, their responses to these questions highlights and shows, demonstrates that clearly.
And then lastly, I just, well, I could go on and on, but I just wanted to thank you, to that point, that you are so proactive and aware of what's going on in our community, that you're integrating your decisions with our climate action plan, with the IDEA Committee, and making it part of the comprehensive whole of our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Pratt.
Council Reyes.
My question was answered, but thank you very much for the annual report, very nice, and just glad to see you guys here presenting.
Likewise.
Council Gonzalez.
Yes, I want to say thank you very much. This is my most favorite committee of all, and you guys are so involved and so active, so thank you very much for what you do, the time you spend. So thank you. Good job.
Any other questions? Well, thank you both for coming tonight. That's a great, you guys are busy.
Thank you. We'll see you during Arbor Month.
Yep. Whoa, just shot to the end. So we have another update from Family Justice Center. Why does she keep doing that? Okay, from the Family Justice Center, they are grant recipient, and they're here to give us an update on what's going on. I know they've grown tremendously, moved a little bit over the last few months. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me, council. Really appreciate it. My name is Rachel Shuts, and I am the Executive Director of the Family Justice Center, and our board chair, Judy Willey, is online tonight. So I just want to give you a overview of what we've done over the past year, and also come and give you an update on the services that were provided to Twalton, as well as thank you very much for your continued support of the Family Justice Center and all of its partners and everything that we do across the county. So first, for anybody that is not familiar with the Family Justice Center, we are a collaborative organization that brings together the providers and our community of services for domestic and sexual violence, as well as their children, and are, I'll talk a little bit about it, but we are expanding that scope to also include child abuse. And so that means that we have lots of different agencies that operate inside of our facility. We're actually now up to 20 agencies that provide services at the Family Justice Center. I think last year, when I came and spoke with you guys, we might be, have been at 16 or 17, so it's pretty neat that we keep sort of expanding like that. And so we are providing services across the community with service providers, such as the Domestic Violence Resource Center, Sexual Assault Resource Center, our law enforcement agencies, court, district attorney, community action, DHS, and those other sorts of basic service providers. So in 2023, we continue to increase our numbers. So we saw a 25% increase in the number of survivors that were served, as well as a 20% increase in the number of services that were provided. We actually broke the 10,000 mark in terms of services provided, which is, to me, the number of services provided is outstanding. That is what I really want to see, being a collaborative agency, is that when somebody comes to the Family Justice Center, they receive not only multiple services, but services from multiple agencies. That means that our big experiment of locating all of these agencies together is bearing fruit for the community, as well as the survivors, not having to go now to 20 different locations. They can come to one location, and they're able to get all of those services. As well as expanding the services that we provided, we increased the impact of those services. And by that, I mean, we increased the outreach so that we could get to more of our community members. We increased the community members that we served that were identified as being of color, as well as being in rural areas of Washington County. So now our service area makes up 28% rural and unincorporated of Washington County, and about 61% urban, which is really great for us, and the reason is, we know that our urban, or not urban, our rural areas and unincorporated areas are the ones that are, have less resource and less access to resources. So in 2023, we solidified a partnership with Ride Connection, and they provided door-to-door transportation for anybody in the rural areas of Washington County to the Family Justice Center if they needed it, which is fantastic. And then they were able to be taken back to their home and could return as many times as they needed to. So that really expanded access, and we saw that partnership bear fruit in the numbers that we were seeing. Overall, in terms of people of color that we served, this was really surprising to me, actually, is Washington County population is made up of 78% white identifying individuals and 22% people of color identifying individuals. The Family Justice Center in 2023 served 57% people of color, which we know statistically, people of color and other marginalized populations are disproportionately impacted by violence or abuse, and even that is bearing out in Washington County in terms of who is accessing the Family Justice Center. Additionally, for the City of Twalton, we provided 60 survivors from Twalton with 105 services. That's really excellent, because Twalton is one of the farther-away jurisdictions from the Family Justice Center, but still, people are finding that access point when they need it. I know our partnership with law enforcement here, and I know Chief is sitting behind me, they're really great about reaching out to the people that live in Twalton and providing those services, handing out the Family Justice Center cards, and also providing rides to the Family Justice Center when somebody needs it. And so our partnership with our law enforcement agencies is one of the strongest across the board for all of Washington County, and we really, really appreciate that. The final thing that I wanted to sort of touch on was some of the outcomes from our survivors, which we do surveys with survivors after they've received services to ask them questions, you know, about what their experience was and things like that. And a couple of them were, a couple of the questions were, "Did you feel like your children were cared for by staff and partners? Did you feel like you were cared for by staff and partners?" And 85% said that they did feel that way. 100% of survivors reported that they experienced trauma-informed care when they received services at the Family Justice Center, and 85% reported that they received the help that they needed in order to keep themselves and their families safe. And so out of all of the data that I'm sharing, those are the ones that mean the most to me, is that when people me, is that when people have the courage and are able to overcome all their barriers to getting the supports that they need, they feel like they got the support they needed in order to find their strength for breaking the cycles. The last thing I'll talk about is, as Mayor mentioned, the Family Justice Center will be expanding. And so in October, we completed the purchase of our new facility, which will be just not very far from where we are now, but at a better access point. It's going to be in, right across the Hillsborough border, in sitting on, in the Tanisborne, Amber Glen, Walker Road area. And so it'll be better access to public transit, as well as major arteries. That facility is currently also in construction planning and construction documents. I felt very smart when I heard him saying that. I was like, I know those words. And that is, we anticipate that facility, which will be called the Family Peace Center, will be opening in 2026, early 2026. And that facility will include a fully functional, actually larger than Multnomah County cares northwest, and so we will have a fully operational child abuse and evaluation center, as well as treatment center. And we will also be having Providence Health and Services operating a forensic clinic. So instead of having to go to the hospital when a survivor is seriously injured or needs a sexual assault examination, they can come to the Family Peace Center instead of St. Vincent's. So that was a lot of information, but does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Well, thank you for all the good work you do. I'm wondering if someone in Tuolton calls, do you help them get to your location?
Yeah, if they need help accessing transportation, we can either help set them up with Ride Connection if they fall into that rural or unincorporated area of Tuolton, or we just get them an Uber or a Lyft up here.
Yeah.
I was going to say, Judy, do you want to say anything?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, good. Oh, good. I thought I'd hit that button so that I could talk if I needed to. I just want to thank Tuolton for their continued financial support. We apply for your grant every year almost since we, our doors have been open since 2018, and you have provided money with that, through that grant for the Family Justice Center. And we just really, really appreciate your continued support. And as Rachel said, we are doing a lot more than we did when we started, which is, has always been our plan of action, to expand and increase. And I was listening to Rachel, and it's really interesting to be out here in no man's land, just being able to sit back and listen. And I, I know, well, my heart is, the FJC is so important to this county, and I'm thrilled to have been involved in it since before we opened the doors. But it is also a very sad scenario that we have to be so engraved into taking care of survivors and the issues of any kind of family abuse and sexual assault and child abuse. But we do. So I'm just really proud that we are there and that we are doing what we say we'll do. And Rachel is doing a great job and has come in and really stepped up the program for us. And it just, and our board is, we have an excellent board of directors that is, are very committed to this Family Justice Center also. So we're in a very good place. Thank you.
Counselora.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for having these programs in our community. I have a question. I just want to comment and congratulate you for doing the work that it could be very hard for some of us to do. So thank you very much for that, for being available for our 60 families here in Tuolton and even more. I remember last year, I asked how many families you serve in Tuolton, and you mentioned it, and this time you actually, like, had it in mind. I was just happy to hear that you're serving our community, so thank you very much for that. And it's, I actually agree, it's sad that we have these kinds of programs, and I wish we didn't, and we, but we do, because we need them. So thank you very much for doing the work.
Thank you, counselor.
Other questions or comments for Rachel or Judy? Can you just remind folks where you're located and what your phone number is if they need help?
Yeah, absolutely. We are located on 158th in Beaverton, and our phone number is 503-430-8300, and it works 24 hours a day. After hours, it also, it routes to all of our partners' crisis lines. And so any type of crisis, including mental health or needing to reach the police, we've set it up so it's just a touch tone. You can choose which one you need to talk to.
158th is, just so people know where, in Beaverton?
Oh, yeah. 158th and Walker, which is right on the Walker Fred Meyer.
Okay.
Yes.
So people have a landmark.
True, true. Yes.
Counselor Sacco, do you want to?
I was going to ask how people.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for making the trip out tonight. We appreciate it, and you guys are doing tremendous work, as Counselora said and Judy said. Wish we didn't have to do it, but I'm glad there's a resource out there for those folks who are in dire need of your help and assistance and protection.
Yeah, thank you. And thank all of you again for not just supporting us financially, but also for constantly showing your support and also having us here to talk about this, because when you show the kind of support and you want to hear from us and all that type of stuff, it signals to your community that this is a safe community for them, that you recognize that this is a problem, that you're willing to talk about it, and that you're willing to create a safe space for them. So it's more than just that, but you guys are so supportive of us, and we really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
That brings us to items removed from consent. We have none. And that next item on the agenda is council communications. Any communications we'd like to share? You know I have two, but anyone else? Want to go first?
I don't, I can go first.
Okay. Counsel President Pratt.
I'm nervous. Oh, sorry. Anyway, it's occurred to me that as a council, our role is to work together as peers, to do what's best for our city. And I think I sent you all a copy of the council rules, and I think that we need, I'm asking for support to have a subcommittee of three counselors and Kevin and possibly even Stacy involved, but that we go, that I think there's a lack of clarity and that we need to agree on acceptable behaviors between us. And I, so I'm suggesting that we have a subcommittee of three counselors and Kevin, where we go through the rules and make recommendations to the whole council on any changes to those. I know last year, we identified a couple of things in there anyway, so I think it's just a good time to go through these and give it an update so we all have clarity on the rules.
Counselor Sacco.
Thank you, Counselor President Pratt, for bringing this up, and I would absolutely be in support of a subcommittee to take a look at the rules, to make sure that we are all collaborative. I don't think that we all have to agree on everything. I don't think that that's what this is about, but to make sure that we are creating a safe space where we can all feel that our voice is being heard, and we can, you know, we can collaborate on things that we don't agree on and move forward in a healthy and positive manner.
Counselora.
I would support that, too. In addition to a safe space, I also want to mention brave space, because sometimes even it could be safe, but not, we're not brave enough to speak up, even in those kinds of scenarios. So I think that respectful conversations and going through the entire council rules, I think it's important having a designated team to look through it and then talk to us about it. I think I'd like to discuss it, like, even if, say, I'm not part of that, I would like to, like, at least meet and say, one-on-one with somebody, say, hey, this is what we talked about. Not necessarily come to a council meeting to talk about it, but it can be like, if you had a change, meet with me and say, hey, Maria, this is what we changed, or this is, do you have any questions? Because sometimes, for even some of us, are hard to speak up in a setting, you know, so kind of want to feel that I feel safe and brave to speak up. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm in support of this and happy to serve on the committee should you choose.
So you got the four votes. Do you want to, because I want Counselor Brooks to be here when we ask for volunteers to be on the committee. So can we just, I know the next agenda's packed, maybe allocate five minutes for volunteers who are willing to be on the subcommittee. I'm assuming Kevin's also going to volunteer. I don't know if it's volunteer or additional duties as assigned. All right. Other counselors. Counsel Hillier.
So I just wanted to point out, there was a lot of things that have happened in the community with our youth, and our robotics team won a huge competition in Sandy. The dance team came in first and second, a couple of different things. Basketball's going well. I'd like to point out that the head basketball coach at Tigard High School unexpectedly passed away, and if you have any, just a moment in your heart for him and for the players at Tigard High School, it was a very, it is a very difficult time for them. And other things to celebrate, I'm sure there are many. The thespian group is doing lots of good things, and I'm sure there's other things, but I just think it's important that we make sure we know what's happening with the youth of our committee, or communities. Thank you.
Other counselors. All right, I just have my two, these are, I'm thinking, pretty easy. So I sent you an email about, city of Wilsonville is asking Tuolton to sign on to the West letter, asking the legislature to take a look at extending the West from Wilsonville further south to Salem. They've garnered a lot of support. It's SB 1572. They, session after session, they keep trying to get this on the legislature's radar. Don't know if they're going to get it on this session, but might as well, you know, help them out in doing it, because I think, you know, we have a lot more folks off of I-5, if they could take the West between here and Salem. And I'm just asking for thumbs up or thumbs down for people to, that we just basically add our logo to that letter. Everyone okay with that? Okay? The second one, another one that's pretty easy. As Chair Harrington said, Washington County's justice system is struggling due to costs. I sent you that one slide of, we're at least four judges short in Washington County court. Washington County judges are hearing more trials than they are in Multnomah County, but there's a half the amount of judges. We're hearing stories of judges that have to interrupt trials to do administrative things that normally they wouldn't have to do. An example was given that certain procedures, the judge will meet with the defendant to find out, you know, the person's background. In Multnomah County Court, that's an hour-long process. In Washington County, they have to do five an hour. So with the, Washington County is struggling, one with the court building itself, lack of space, public defenders and prosecutors, and then you get in the community justice section where just woefully underfunded. So the justices in Washington County Circuit Court have asked the city support to send a letter or a resolution to Salem during this short session, just putting a stake in the ground, saying, you know, Washington County needs help. The resolution process, our resolution process takes too long, because the short session is on now, and they want to get in front of ways and means right now. So I'm just asking that we can support, that I can direct Sherilyn to have a letter drafted for my signature, that will also say inside of it that the city council is supportive of this. Just asking that the legislature deal with the funding crisis in Washington County, if not this session, but or in 2025. Okay with that? Those seem two easy ones.
Can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Yeah. Are there, like, is it, this problem has always been happening? Did they, people leave, like, they just left? Or what's the problem?
Washington County, the funding comes from the state, and Kevin Pratt can answer this way better. So each county is funded by the state for the court system, and Washington County, with the growth we've had, has never kept up.
So it's just growth?
It's growth.
Okay.
And you've got, you know, a tremendous amount of trials being held that haven't, weren't held in the past. We've got, the jail system, we all know, is struggling with sheriffs. The latest I heard, they're short now 70 sheriffs in Washington County between patrol and the jail. So it's, the county is struggling financially, as we know. So we're looking for, you know, we all want public safety to be supported, and this is somewhere the state should pony up the money. It's part of their duty to, you know, fund the court system here in Washington County.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Is that it? Go ahead.
Can I motion to adjourn?
Yes, you can.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Against? Good evening, everyone. Have a great, great night. Thanks for listening in or attending.